With that, it's seven o'clock and we'll call the meeting to an end. Seven o'clock. It's like you. But I don't think it's actually. And I'm going to need to reply. To this on there. To everybody. It's in. What's up? You can add your some, you heard you're back away but this is here next. Um, Mr. Hall. We're hearing from him. On Mr. Holden. Holden right here. Um, Mr. Cameron just here. He's never out here. Mr. Nixon here. Mr. Conley is here. So, Mr. Moore here, which means you're a good planner. Before. Probably there for yourself. Done. In their respective role. Um, we need to look at the meeting from May ninth, nine o'clock minutes. Let me see if we include those minutes. Go take a vote for the three o'clock minutes. There even need to look at there for the details. Hearing nothing. All in favor of including minutes, it's regular meeting to be nine twenty-three, this is my eye. I have an eye. All opposed. Motion carries. Next meeting approach tonight's agenda. The one quarter year packet prepares.
Well, I would make a motion to approve this agenda.
There's no amendments or anything we need to look at on there. Then all in favor of approving tonight's agenda. This is my eye. I, I, all opposed. Agenda's approved. Okay, uh, this brings us to public comments. Those comments, those citizens wishing to speak on agenda and not agenda items will be allowed and asked before they get to that concern. Uh, this is the only time in the meeting that simply will allow to address the planning commission unless you are, um, you want to address us bringing two scheduled public hearings for the coming. Uh, please state your name and address for the rapid. Is there anyone on booth?
Same note answer.
Seeing no man rush for the left turn, Eleanor on, you want on Zoom, we will close the public comments. And move on to topics interest and that's our communication. For anything from the planning commission that needs to report. Moving right along with those that are part of it. But we, um, alluded to scheduled public hearings are next on our agenda, so here's your next opportunity to give your advice. Uh, the first public hearing that we're going to open tonight is on, it was concerning Vanderhigh Ford, forty-five North Main, ninety-one North Fifth Street. Um, Cedar Springs, parking lot expansion site interview and special meetings. So with that, we'll open the hearing. Uh, is there any public comment on this application? We will first talk to the applicants about if they'd like to. Point, or if they want to public have a team that has to add to it without previous. I mean, no one.
No one answer.
Okay, with that, uh, we'll close the public hearing portion of it and move on to the site plan application. And I'm not sure how we'll help you on proceeding this tonight, um. If you're more, if you look at your very quickly trying to throw something together.
I'm, I'm gonna take it now for good. If the applicant has somebody here, it'd be helpful to have them do an overview of their plan and then we can kind of go from there.
Okay, does that work for you?
I'm Matt McCambridge, I'm with Newton's builders, Rockford, and Vanderhigh Ford is one of my clients. They asked us to, uh, help them with the, uh, site plan for their, uh, new public parking lot. Um, and basically, uh, they just liked their block thing, we put it in the floor, they're purchasing that parcel to the south of them. Uh, their service department, uh, has just expanded and, uh, the need for service has grown, uh, beyond what that, uh, parking lot can handle, really. Also, they're, um, they're looking to, right now, they're currently parking on some of the white line trail property. Just out of, you know, they're running out of spots to park. Um, so they're looking to get those gifts off that property and onto the new parking lot, so, um. You know, with, um, with that, will then be, um, you know, the rate of, uh, repair orders, which is, it just continues to increase for them. So I think that's, that's, that's the bottom line, there is, I'm saying, looking for your block thing before they purchase that property, so, um, the site plan, I'm sure you all seen. Um, so did you guys have any questions for me on that, or any issues with it?
Um, well, I just have, I'm gonna bring this up, we had a, we had a report, he's a planner, which is, so he got that. I'm not sure the thing thing had been resolved, there were definitely issues if there's before that all allowed him to expand upon. Um, and I feel those have been recognized since the time of that.
That's my knowledge. So, um, and I can kind of quickly just go through, I mean, for the first time a while, we don't have to go through the entire thing. Um, so there's, what their, her fourth thing to do, I think, is, you know, is that we can buy the property that is directly south of them. And so they're gonna add a, you know, some of the, like, vehicle service area on the southern end of the building, expand a parking lot on the southern property. Um, the site zone C three, so this is a special use in that district, tends to public hearing. Um, it's kind of an odd shaped part, both along, you know, three centuries, all driven by countless times. Um, and so, you know, it looks like based on what the site plan shows compared to what we currently have, it's probably at twenty, twenty-five hours additionally out of the property at the time. What they had, it looks like it would be a much better arrangement overall for, for parking. Um, and so there were some emails exchanged with, um, the former city manager, Mr. Volmack, uh, back in like March or April, where, um, he, uh, informed them of some of the things they would need for the, uh, for, for the site plan. Um, there's a fairly lengthy list that he emailed them that included what they would need in terms of some of, of, of basic stuff, like ingress and egress, you know, ADA parking spaces, get some comments on maneuverability in general. Um, but larger issue, he highlighted in there, he expected the planning commission to look, look, look a lot, he was something, he was relating to a lighting plan. Um, information as to how the stormwater would be directed from that site. A landscaping plan, if there's going to be landscape islands, which are physically required. Uh, I know there's some information that is shown on site law on the site plan, and there's a line of trees right along the southern end of that new property. Um, and then he also, um, had a note in there and he repeated it as well about the statement details, or details of prospection on the plan. Typically when we get kind of like this, like we saw last month with the, uh, with the, um, clinical facility, there's a, there's a, you know, engineered plan that kind of shows what lighting levels are going to be, also water, if anybody may be collected on the site. Um, that there's going to be some landscape shown, how that's going to be, where it's going to be, species, um, plant details, things like that. And so that information hasn't been shown on the plan. In principle, I don't have significant concerns with the idea of the expansion, um, but there were some details missing from the site plan. The other item that Mr. Volmack noted in his email, I think he also will see the letter or email to that effect, but, um, it's our understanding there's been complaints from the people who live on the, uh, west side of the trail about the noise. So I think in the summertime when it's hot, a lot of those overhead doors are left open. And so, uh, repair shops obviously can be flowed with equipment, a huge machinery to run, things like that. Typically these kinds of facilities, you, you fill it publicly, minimize the sound, you know, we don't want to give any problems, things like that. And I, I don't know if there's a plan for that, or, or if, uh, if we have a kind of plan to address that in any meaningful way, but that would be also something that I think the planning commission should take into consideration. As it's looking at kind of an expansion, it's like, you know, decrease or uptick in, uptick in intensity on a property. Um, I think those need to be taken into consideration because there's a lot of houses nearby. And there's kind of a conflict there between, but, you know, what can be at times a fairly high intensity, um, you know, personal operation, personally the house, and then if it's something that's on the trail. Obviously, this is the only issue for a few months out of the year, only if it's closed, it won't close presumably. But I think they should probably back down a little bit in the, in, in the colder months, but, back down for the last couple of weeks has, has been a little bit more difficult. Uh, for, if those doors have, have been built in, I haven't taken a careful, but there's a great, they want to talk like in terms, personally, what the situation on the, on the site was, this is based on, uh, emails from Mr. Volmack and, you know, the letter, I think, to not double these go through to the same effect, so that's mentioned in here as well, just as something that we think the planning commission should consider as much forward.
And I can assure you that, uh, Vanderhigh Ford will hire civil engineers to do the site plan, that'll show all of the, uh, drainage details, landscaping details. And it will also get a flow of lighting plan from the lighting. But I think what the owner just wanted to do is to get a lot of things through the floor, and for purchases of parcel, and then hires those individuals to do, uh, the next steps. And getting the site plan where you get those.
Generally, we have those things on site plan, that's the contiguous thing for the. We don't normally say we order.
But you're, you don't see anything with the plan, other than not having, uh, those either.
I, I mean, myself personally, and I don't definitely want to pull the rest of the people up here, it, the concept of, you can, they're probably not necessarily part at all.
Right.
It's just, uh, you need to have all that information. For support.
Okay. I'd, I'd agree with the same way you're saying. Usually have a complete site plan before you either come in front of the planning commission. Okay, but I don't see how it would be a problem.
I mean, it, it, it seems, uh, to be worthwhile if we're going to, if, if, um, the business is as, and you say, and obviously no one's gonna spend that money to expand otherwise. Um, great, um, but we need to make sure everything is, you know, covered before then, including the possibility of, uh, noise contamination from it. Right, so that, that's been a, well, this, this is not the first complaint we had on the noise there, and I can speak for myself, even late at night, well, it will be late at night, nine kind of five, there's a lot of noise, you know, ability to walk, sounds like, I'm afraid. I'm not sure exactly what's going on in there, but there's a lot of noise. So.
Nine hundred and fifty.
Uh, that summer, walking on wet, on trail, yeah. I'm not sure what's going on there, I'm not sure if it's some mechanical thing going on.
But employees working on their own vehicles or something like that always, but.
Yeah, I've, I've often wondered, there's a lot of noise going, why would this be going on, it's totally.
Okay, well, I'll bring up that noise, uh, issue to the owner, and then I will tell him that, uh, it's actually, I don't see it as wrong with it, but it's got to the weather being, or what it's happening to. Get it all.
Yeah, and then the stormwater, right.
Correct. And understanding too, these times where the planning commission are not binding in anyway, right, so you're not, you're not committing yourself to, to an approval at the next meeting, you know, hopefully that, that's valuable to me, right, but I don't want there to be a thought that we're good, this is an automatic thing, you know, they'll also have to read the standards, and if that's okay, then it'll be a positive. For the sake of compliance.
But don't, don't just start.
Can we do preliminary as a city manager?
I wouldn't, I mean, normally when you do a lot of that, I, I have more in front of me. Okay, just this detail of that, or this wire, like that.
Right, but that, that's why I would ask.
I wouldn't choose. Um, but, yeah, I think maybe you, but I'm not able to.
Yeah, I would, yeah, that'll be fine.
We'll, if we let you, we'll get about ready, come on to the process.
Okay. Yeah, that'll be fine.
Would, and if you want us to push you through that?
I'll do that in a second for that. I know that we tabled the, uh, approval for Vanderhigh for right now, until our next meeting.
I'll second that.
Um, any others work around this before we move on? All in favor of enabling, uh, this issue, and so the next meeting, July, this is my eye. I, I, it's all opposed. Motion carries, so we're capable.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And then the next scheduled public hearing tonight is regarding to the solar regulation ordinance. So I will open up, uh, public comment for that. And has the, you can think already sharing them about state power. I'm sure that uses the businesses, we gotta know. Has anyone added to who's here or after?
Nobody answered.
I'm starting to get comments about that. So, and so, uh, hearing nothing, then, uh, we will close the public hearing on the solar regulation ordinance. Um, but we still have to, uh, push this on, it's a outdoor, that's what we're going to be doing, that's true. Is there anything new on that, because the way we left it, I mean, that thing and the way it left month, I don't think. It looks great. A little bit. But we should put a motion on the table, I want to expect to hear others. So. I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of the solar regulations ordinance to the state office.
I'll put more.
Oh, any discussion? Or I'm concerned that it comes up since last time in this test. That's several things.
I think we've got it covered last.
Okay. Well, then, all in favor of recommending approval of solar, solar regulations ordinance, or say, I'll put, please, and if I would, I.
I.
I, all opposed. Carries. So now we're on to item nine, uh, site plan reviews. Item A is informal review for White Creek Plats. Coming up to that.
Oh, him, he would, he would.
Um, I certainly belong you to have before. Very pleased to set this up, but, so, and it was, we can move things amount of necessary. I think we are, he was, the, the flag is important, because in fact, we're going to, we're going to. So we, I would. I wish. Yeah, but.
Good evening, many of us have stayed here, and that's not. Also with us tonight, Paulie Woczki and Doug Gold, for the applicant. Uh, this, uh, White Creek Plats number was approved, you say approximately a year ago, I didn't even know that exactly. Um, and I've also been looking at various things in the past, past year. One, one thing, the main thing that I might came up and read more over here tonight for revision, is, uh, there was a wetland study done, and, uh, there was a significant amount of wetland. The ag field, uh, we're surprised. Um, but, uh, so that's, uh, so we've been working, Eagle, to delineate that, that wetland, and what you see in the lighter areas on the, the plan there are, are as wet as there is. So the plan has been revised rather significantly to avoid as, as much of the wetland as possible. Uh, now, I would say the area up to the right of the plan, led me to the north, going up the storm, and then that is primarily the same, um, about the area that you see down there in the south east, the probably the area that has changed, involves. Now, I'll just briefly explain, uh, the basics of what we did in the revision. Uh, uh, the previous layout had nine buildings, they were, uh, twenty and sixteen unit buildings, uh, two-story building, total one hundred and sixty-four units, some previous plan. This plan has, um, on that eight total buildings, these buildings are three-story buildings, twenty-four units, um, so there's six twenty-four unit, and you'll see there are two twelve unit buildings. So there's one less building, the building's actually a bit smaller because they've gone up one story. Uh, and so what it does really, and it's been primarily in that, that deeper portion, you get, because the buildings are smaller, you get more, you get more green space and the wetlands primarily are in that green screen. We did that to separate out the, you see, three basic, uh, pension ponds, air group, did that to get more larger one, uh, than the previous plan, had to it goes up. Uh, so, now, the, all the amenities that, uh, were provided previously are still in play. Uh, which begins in the building there, the entrance, football hall, basketball court, uh, golf park, all the, we didn't lose any new thing in the program uh, for the, for the project, uh, it just got rearranged and, um, condensed, I guess we will, as far as the building coverage. Um, I'll show you the, a little of the side, here, that's been disposed. So that's, yeah, that's the, the three-story, the twenty-four year, so there's two entries, two entries into the building. Um, and the problem in the building is, is clearly just trying to get at. So, and, uh, we still have all the same number of drunks, one garage per unit, and we have a ratio of one point two, one or two per unit. So all that, um, is very similar to what, uh, was previously approved. Uh, so, we're here tonight really just to update you, showing you what we're proposing, see if you have any initial comments. If you hope to be here in July, or be upon the severity, still here in the last few days, so if there's any comments that you do have in the field, uh, address those, um, for the middle. Um, yeah, so that's, that's what we've got. We've got representatives from the applicant here, if you have any questions. Uh, it'll be a part of it. Thanks.
What is, um, I just want to remind myself, what is the outside, um, what is that, uh, material that's on the outside there? I'll, I'll let Doug focus to figure that.
Um, primarily, like, these are very several different materials, so, uh, when you're looking at the roof, you use a laminated asphalt shingle, an architectural shingle, and accent with a stainless steel belt, um, some of the windows have it over as a detail, uh, with primary result. And then on the building itself, it'll be a combination of masonry, a couple of different colors of vinyl siding, and then we use, uh, obviously our trim, accent trim, uh, three floors, that makes sense. Typical materials to what you see, and we use, we do three ourselves in our house, now I have to say, four to five ourselves in our house. Um, so, a good level of material, we're not, we're not trying to cheapen it up because it's a part. What we try to do is put the masonry where you get the most traffic, the most, uh, pedestrian, where they bump it up and damage it. We're often going to get some issue, uh, that's how they're trying to. But yeah, we, we spent quite a bit of time not taking the planning commission to the council, went to the tax credit, you know, so, um, we're hoping this can all get wrapped up this summer, so.
It's been a process.
It's been a long process, so.
So, and, and, and it helps, obviously, if it worked before, they were, um, over the plan of ours before, like, that's the rest of the thing there. Obviously, we're, get wait to see the, the finished products, if we can go forward on that, but, it's pretty good.
Yeah, I mean, I think we previously approved a hundred and sixty-four year, this has changed slightly to a hundred and sixty-eight, only because of the type of building. Um, in cotton, he was all about.
So that's the next question I'm going to ask, what the, the overall number of units there were on the property had that.
Yeah, so where is the four? Going three fours, you're taking a view on.
Sure, sorry.
Inside, I believe, is.
Where footage of the units is very similar to what it was before, um, the ratio of one bedroom, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, very, very similar. So typically, when projects like this will have twenty-five percent of the units are one bedroom, twenty-five is three bedroom, and then fifteen now where it's two bedroom.
And then sort of, like, main.
Uh, all, all the main four units will be accessible, and then you'll also have some units that are area free, uh, as required by codes, so. Not sure how many actually become very free, but, everything on the first floor is required to be accessible, so, light the doorway, there's no cap. But over one, you know, one third of them will be acceptable. Yeah, our, our main purpose for tonight is to, to change what you don't like, you want to make sure we include it in our, in the, so. So, I mean, I obviously don't get, this is not a formal review, but, you know, sometimes you're kind of like, oh, I, I don't like that at all.
It gets, like, sometimes, yeah.
Right.
But we got, that nailed down first, yeah, so. I'll, I'll keep that in mind.
No, I'm.
That's what I wanted to introduce, I'm gonna let you, uh, put that down, because that, that people stand up there forever and forget about them. Don't do that, uh, Mr. Moore in the talking, is, I want to make sure we're here for you all.
Yeah, uh, thank you, I don't have any comments at this time, so this, um, it came in, uh, too long, whatever, I have time to do it, just throw, you know, you die by. There'd be a question that I had at this point, that we need to figure out internally, maybe we need to keep it. Uh, last time, there was a site plan review, uh, and re-running application, and at the same time, site plan was approved. Um, you know, that's since become known, and it's been a while, and because it's been significantly changed application, so you know, it was recommended for approval, uh, the planning mission subject to the four twenty-five, also, that's happened, it's final, so that happened. So, usually we need to make sure that, um, and so approve the site plan, I'm not sure when to really know this, the reason it's requested again, and then to get the, for the four twenty-five, again, last we made it to allow the city to, uh, actually decide its planning, just to know the property, but right now this is a form of how to, uh, probably this is. Um, otherwise, initially, our comments on the site plan are, we did primarily to landscaping, uh, the, the, the activity and sidewalk and commandees, and make sure that a project can, like, pretty easily accessible, and here, if they kind of could do, we did earlier, it seems to, you know, match pretty well with, kind of what we were looking for the first time around, so. Um, I guess, for, consider any future comments for the next meeting, we'll have a chat through the long throw, for, for, you know, if I don't see anything, I guess, fatal at this point. Um, but I do, we, we'll need to figure out the process why.
Yeah, I'll do it. Okay, thank you, thank you, and move on to the next site. Um, item B, uh, the Village Learning Center, uh, speech thirty-six in the packet, by the way, we might be turning it off, so. Ever happen to be at that option, like that. In the meantime, I looked like we have a representative, we're getting, after, after that turn, and I will turn it over to her, seeing if she can.
Well, um, I think you are aware now, but we.
I'm sorry, before we, before we go to the, I just had to talk to the.
Jennifer Roy.
Thank you.
Um, we, I guess the word we do, we know to demolish the building, essentially it fell down. Um, when we, the hope was to take the roof off and replace the roof, and, um, once the roof came off, most of the walls fell down. Um, we had, you know, two of the walls that were remaining standing, one of them was the one that had the electrical box on it. The following day, when somebody was rapping off materials, you know, we had that, um, you know, I, after the day, it was, we had some human rights out there. Um, they. Um, it was decided that we just needed to take the rest of the wall down, they found tonight, and a whole bunch of other stuff that was just not safe. I was under the impression that this was all done as it shouldn't have been. Um, I've since learned from Darla that it was not, that, um, you need to say, what was it again? It was, the building was previously not conforming, right? Is that, and so, um, they rebuilt it on the same spot, but did not realize that it had to get approved to. Because the building didn't use the requirements now, at the moment, and I make, okay. Um, so we now have a beautiful building. Um, the second thing was when, um, they went to do the safety and whatnot for the retention time. Um, they seemed to have incisioned that the retention time was going to have to be slightly larger, um, than the originally anticipated. Um, unfortunately, the parking lot did not allow for that to happen. And so, Dean Strad, um, had to go back through and, um, basically, re-engineered the whole thing. We had to. Fire our previous architect, um, who found out. Beautiful and different. Um, so we, um, the Dean Strad, Dean Strad and, um, another company had kind of been looking at it. Just out of kindness to help us stand practice, so we didn't have to start everything all over again. So I, I looked at it, the only issue that they found was the parking lot. Um, they redrawn it, but it does not allow for, um, the extra wing and all of that. It's essentially, it's the white crepe, you know, white pine fin and everything, you know, are called the creep there. It's essentially the same as their parking lot, is what we had designed. But down through that to back, if you're familiar with that one, just right there, so that, and try to sometimes go in and out easier. Um, they felt that the previous parking lot was kind of over, they thought, um, we've been with, it's caused a whole lot of the building. Um, so it's simple, and it does allow for extra parking spaces. Um, I personally drove around just in different clouds, there's runners to see what they have. Um, and spoke with a couple of, uh, directors to see if there was any issues or concerns. They had, the building had similar parking lot cities in there, it kind of seems to be pretty much outstandard, but it's just simple.
I, I have a question, um, if I, if you refresh my memory from what we did this before. Um, there was, as you said, there was a, a driving round there. But if I remember correctly, you said that we wouldn't be having drop-off.
Right, the architect was, so the huge thing with the architect was adding an out having, one being the best of you all. I think you taught my budget, it was way different than what it was, and there was a whole lot of things that were just ridiculous, like, some of them, we had to actually cross them out. Um, the other was, he wanted this drive lane, um, but he wanted it to be like a drop-off lane. And there can't be, they can't just be drop-off, it's not legal with licensing, a child has to be walked in with their parents and checked in to the system. Um, and checked out, we can't just, you know, hand off kids and, or let them run out the door, and have to come in and visit the child. Um, so it wasn't something that, and I, I was practical or necessary, I guess. Um, I felt like it would be used more as parking spaces, that people might park along there and walk their child in and then pull out. Um, but yeah, so the plan does eliminate that drive lane, and it's correcting all the.
And that, I, I didn't feel like the drive lane was something coming from us.
No, it wasn't.
If, if, that we needed that, it's, it was just trying to make it, it's, under the.
Um, the old city manager did, um, have some problems with my initial parking lot, which was very similar to this. You guys did not, um, so I, you know, I, I don't want to let you say about that, but.
The less, the better.
That was, that was why the drive lane and all of that got added.
Um, uh, I do want to hear from the city manager and the city planner, because there's a lot of the big parts here. And I want to be, hear what we can, because this is in a, this is a touchy situation. In that we approved, technically, we approved one thing, and we're getting a different thing. And so, um, so that we aren't setting precedence in ways that I don't want to set, I want to make sure that I got that all.
Can I add one thing, though? Um, I know you guys had the option to put this on hold and go through the whole process again. The problem is, we, um, have, I'm honored to have been asked to have a great set ready in the program. Preschool classroom in the building, which I'm not sure if you're familiar with that, that is the four-year-old state-funded preschool classroom that is meant to target children starting at lower income and then have rich daughters, and then the income increases until the classrooms are full. But they, um, the community that's currently in Cedar Springs School, there's also one in CTA, but they do not have enough room for all the children that, and then you have to try and take away. So, we've been asked to have one of these classrooms in there, which means we have to open this school here. And, um, that's kind of where our kind of front is coming from, so I'm hoping you look at that in consideration in terms of putting everything and going through the process.
I, I, I'm a big fan of the GSRP, I've worked with that, I was a youth worker years ago.
Oh, I didn't know that.
So I know a lot of people who did that, but, um, again, we got to make sure that we.
Of course.
Follow the law and, 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 and work within the power that we have.
Right.
So, um, hopefully, we can find a solution to this, but I do want to hear from, uh, the city planner and the city manager here at the Hall of Water House. Well, we're definitely going to probably back up, but I want to give you a minute.
All right.
Be bearable. Do you want to start on the?
Okay, so yeah, this is the interesting, uh, thing, uh, thinking about this, so, um, I think, uh, what the tourism pride was a good, uh, summary. Um, you know, our, so the question that, that we, we initially revolved around the. Um, and in fact, the stormwater management facility was undersized, they had to take a little bit harder. But at that time was, well, let me just consider that as administrative, you know, renew, because you can, you know, that can, when there's a minor change or something, you can just sign off on that. If you think it's a consequential change. Um, and so, uh, Darla and I talked about that, uh, also looked at, with the other changes we're opposed for the site, because changing parking lot looked like it. Some of the lanes did make a change, so we just went to dumpster, and things of that nature. So we were already kind of waiting for, because there were several changes, and because of the parking lot, some of the planning commissions that we had discussing. Was leaning towards bringing it back to the planning commission for this, reviewing the site plan in any ways and kind of seeing if it was a lesson. Um, and then, um, I didn't realize that the building had come down completely, where it basically was destructive. Ordinarily, that would not be, I think, either, except that, um, if, if, if you mentioned that the existing building, that we would not report. Um, this property zone, I think it's the radius, like, three players, like, a twenty-five or thirty-foot step back. Uh, I think those would probably, and as you know, if you've been by the side, which is true, you will have, it's seen the progress today, that's pretty much after the side lock line. And the front lock line, everything. So the current building does not need, either of those setbacks, and typically, the zoning would happen if someone, so if you have a non-performing building, and if it burns down, if, uh, it's tornado comes through and destroys it, or if you volunteer to tear it down, you can't put it back unless you put it back in a way that complies with ordinance. It's why it's for that kind of eccentric, if that's something that doesn't comply, if you demolish that thing, why would it make sense? But then, well, okay, you put it back in a way that, in, in, in a way that complies with the back. Um, so the challenge here, of course, was this, yeah, we didn't know that. Um, it sounds like the, is it, they take the building down with kind of a, an entirely voluntary, they just, it's kind of fell down. And then on top of that, they, they did themselves, with the, the building itself, um, who would standard a permit for, uh, for there to go down. You have to go in for this to rebuild the building and make that good decision. So, you know, she was ever advised that this was going to be a problem, I don't know, and what you, there's a people not performing, I didn't know it was people not performing, there's, there's been some of that. So, I started re-redoing what it was submitted, what the current zoning was, and that's when all these, all of them started going out of my head, which was. Um, so with all that in mind, so that obviously, if I don't, you're having to come back to the planning, it's, it's complicated, so. Um, and so there's sort of two paths forward, is I, um, one path forward would be the more difficult path for the object, and would be to, um, direct them to those, is on more, and the quest of veracity for those, you know, to come back, so, so we can step back on, um, what is, I, is that really?
Yeah, fine, it's very, I mean, fine, probably with five, two, three rows, it'll be, you know, for who would be on, you know, two and five blocks.
Yeah, and, and, and even the fine side is probably right at the, like, probably top of it. So, and so that went up, you know, and probably the, the ideal role with the client design factor and all these other things, that's what I'm trying to do. Uh, we say, look, you know, buildings should never have been rebuilt in the first place, the property, not in the right place. Um, that would be, is procedurally, and by the absolute strict letter of, of ordinance, you'd stop work on the entire site, which would show a few of that, that we built. However, I do think there's an argument to be made that, um, maybe, I, maybe I'll get, I did, they brought this in there, probably. Um, this was something where there was some sleight of hand going on, and, well, I'm not telling you that against their confidence, I want to. First, we didn't, this way to get it built to reduce something that was, from the things that happened on it. Uh, I don't think doing it in a, in a purple, thank you, if anything were to, all the purpose would be the fact that the building is still going. Also, either demolition of the building, also, either the reconstruction of the building, and zoning consideration in terms of location, or the penalty that we gave them to count. So, where are the, I, I just don't know what that is. Here to, you know, throw that, you know, the one of the bus, or that, hoping to get into the bus, or the four, four, whoever did, but. The fact remains that that's probably where the error is. Um, that being said, if you had, we're not about that, this would have been a very long delay, the, 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 the down, and we would have said, okay, Doc, you got to get this, this, this possible. If they approved variance, which there was no guarantee of something happening, then you could have proceeded with the variance without approving. The whole project might have been falling apart because it wouldn't, uh, we built much of anything on, considering not something that. It was close to what proposed, and that's, physically, engineering, redesigning, everything that obviously, that you need to get work. So, um, in our staff report, we kind of give you two options. Uh, one is to, suppose, uh, if the EPA approves the variance for those two setbacks. Um, and you have to come back to your, if the site plan is approved by the planning, then that's, we start. And probably delays this, this whole, uh, investigation, that, 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 which is the problem. That's kind of, we're all slow, but the, 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 that it is, we need to do together, it's a big part of it. So, that is one option, I've heard of, the other option, uh, which is a little more flexible, um, but I think that, you know, the city can recognize the, 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 the. Um, she got the site plan approved, she got the quick lanes, the permit approved, um, the city's building, the first one, of the several, like, old buildings. So we'll, we'll find out how I can structure some of the new building. Um, based on, on, on fact, that now the building is already there, by the time you figure out how to be taken, there's new building to also be able to not perform. But then to allow us, continue to reconstruct it in the exact form, it would be subject to the non-performing regulations that we're running, or like the old building would have done, so. You know, it would be, it will or will be tough to extend it in the future, or, or maybe it, it may change that building in the future, because it's not compliant right now. That would at least allow the evidence to go forward, and then, so that's kind of the big issue, number one. That, that if you're comfortable with the changes to the site plan, I'm really willing to, 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 to allow. Um, and to get other changes, require, certainly, in a state of, you know, landscaping changes, you know, we don't show up, so. Uh, you better prove the site plan as well. Uh, the site plan issue is the personalized kind of the main one, um, we looked at a bunch of, uh, based on my experience, just, you know, as a parent, and also just doing style. We'll say a bunch of details, so we, we just have regular parking lots, because you have to hand it off to your, you know, three-year-old, and say, all right, run for that door right there, and you're in there. But you gotta, you gotta go in, and, and, and security, you know, check it, they've, they've got assignment, and all that, so, you know, stop off your, other stuff to go along with it, so. Um, I don't have any major issues with the parking lot, I just design, but I like that almost every time we do that, in fact, it's kind of, you know, thirty-nine years, probably. Pretty much just designing, maybe a bigger apartment, uh, with a, with a facility that, you don't think. You want to pull them, take them out, they're walking, and then bring them, five minutes, and then sell. Um, so I don't have any, any, any concerns with the reach of the parking lot, and I've seen it get formed worse, because they had to do this, so I could be tempted, mainly concerned by the parking punch. Um, this would help, we'd have a little bit by, by providing support, additional pay for, by visiting staff, work there would probably start on the outside, and everything turned on the outside, and could have had a, that's, um, a process, a drive-by.
We were still hoping to, um, to, 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 to.
Okay, yeah, that's right. Um, other, other changes there, so, you know, it looks like there's a slight addition on the building that Don Spirit project moved, so this was kind of the north end of that parking lot. Um, it should be acceptable, because if they try and, um, to, 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 to. Um, there was a slight modification to the lot, it's a walkway, it's the, at the building, on the side of the, of the slight modification. Um, there was something I gave you that was proved, with the previous site plan, generally along the south side of the property. Um, there was stuff, like, that three, four, groups of bushes there, those have been, um, have been removed. Um, and then, as shown on that, on the right, so if we can turn about screening the south to require, that's the company, that's not the whole, sort of crew firing, but with the movie. Then, obviously, with kind of precipitated, precipitated this entire thing, who, you know, was born, weren't just going to uh, but she was working with insurance and associate, so, doing the most you could, put this plan together, so, um, I think it'd be a little more complex, but that would be more really sized, and, um, if we recommended to have, so we just, just to check the, I don't want to talk, but they have to buy.
I was thinking, there's no fence, and are you, um, are you charged with, like, are you not helping with those, those on plan?
Correct, no, that's a very hard problem, yeah, so on the view of the plan. Um, on, on the view of the plan, on the south side of the parking lot. Um, means to pay in fact with that, there was a, a fence, and there was three little proposed
Oh, yeah, but there is a fence there already, is that the veteran part, you guys, maybe have, I think it's in the country, right? There is a fence there, and then it goes. So, if you look at the thing, you can see those green trees, turning the L, that is city fence, so they're there already. Um, we're planning on doing it to match your guy's response, because in the last, um, the, the black chain link, for the playground, like, except for a month, I'm straight and like, raised concerns about the shop, and I'm sure you're gonna use that, and it's
So, um, that's pretty much long and short, and the rest of it is, we'll find, um, the pine tree fence might need to get new, and where it, I need this. Um, I don't know what's happening. But, those are, are, are really many concerns. The, the big one, obviously, is sort of how, how people proceed from here, because there's a lot going on, and it's kind of a, a branch you throw into the understanding of the target. Figure out a way to see, how, how much proceeds, um, so we wrote out a motion for you, um, that is reflective of option two. Which is the, well, considered to be legally non-performing type of an option, if there are times where that, you know, has to uh, that is, is something that you're trying to, you wrote out a little, that I, um, that's
So, quick question for Mr. Moore. When we have a house that's like in B two district, um, and, uh, it wants to sell, but it is non-performing, we have to enact the SOU, so that, so that way, the bank is okay, because, oh, it can be built again. If it burns down. Is there something where we need to enact an SOU? And not that in that particular area, but that it would um, correspond with how it's supposed to.
No, it's, um, so, for one, there are these, there isn't for, for, for the day. So, two, and I, I'm not sure, um, about this, about the special maintenance process, near that, so there's, there's multiple different ways, there's probably you can have a non-performing building, or just, for example. Or you can have a non-performing use, when you have a building that gets set back, but the building, the utilized by purpose that it's not So, maybe that's your practice of bringing in special maintenance permits. Um, that's, that's what the bank has issued, the plan, is to address non-performing use issue? Because that would be after, if your duplex burns down, you have to go to that, 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 if it's off, right, that's, that's ninety-four duplex, you can build, you can rebuild the duplex, so on and that, building is in form, so to set that. That's, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of guessing here, but I'm thinking that's probably where that comes from here. Um, and unfortunately, that's not going to help with this. Okay, so there's still going to be the non-performing issue, um, and it's, it was going to be there no matter what, if the building had never fallen down, it's a building that's in perfect shape, and we're just, you're talking about the parking lot, and so it would still be illegally non-performing, so.
Okay.
The way that, there's probably not a way to hook anything else on that study. And certainly not what she wants to do, is would not work on that, I don't think. With a conforming building. So, either do we look at re, rebuilding that property, which probably would make it less, same kind of old duplex, or do something like that.
Thank you.
Um. I don't know, we're, especially, we shouldn't, can I make the motion, you know, you Sure. Okay, um, I would like to make, um, your option two, and you did, and, um, just motion, and then it's got everything covered, that you want to be talking.
I, I don't care if you do the whole thing, but I want to make sure she's comfortable with, with all five things, like, that's
If that you've made the motion that was prevented. On page four of the city planners.
Um, I just, um, and it's, it's just a whole fiasco, you know, and I don't really want her to have to, um, have to deal with starting over, you kind of have a little hand in it. Before you start, so, I think making it faster hard for her is not the right call, I think, that we should be able to move forward.
Yeah, I agree completely, I mean, the project kind of fell apart there, the building upstairs beautiful, it's going to be a great addition to the town. A great resource for the town, so, let her move ahead, get it done. This really comes down to intent for me, I mean, if it was, if it was an obvious, um, intent to just be, that would be anything, you know, that's not what you like. But this, but there is that that intent there, um, obviously, the fact that as the building, um, officials approving it, and the understanding of the outstanding, the technology. And then, um, I didn't know until tonight, and it was, no, the fact that you were following the plan, and you let us know, as you intended to, and took off the rope, and then the rest of the building decided to do unexpected things, I mean, that that takes some, some options out of your hand.
Trivial, and that, and Cambridge, that was mutual, and actually, he is who completely saved the project, I'm not sure if you're aware, but you donated entire group, and you stayed at Sky Park and all the other equipment for a whole month, at no cost to us. For this, that, I'm stuck. And Sandell, they were, um, kind of in the, I was trying to save building, because you took the building down, and my project is gone, and I'm already seeing three dollar sign there, not normal sign, dollar amounts that I'm used to seeing, so having my own panic attack public thing, and they didn't just tell me when the building came down, I drove by one day, and I was like, oh, my, what just happened? And you weren't sure to see that wall, but, um, they, uh, they had, the plan was, that they were going to want the wall back up, and they, it was their decision along with everybody else, to take it down, and that they would offer the later, and Sandell lumber without the materials, to bring it back, so that it was the condition that they felt seniors and children were, so I thought that was pretty impactful, um, there. Part, because we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars.
The last concern that I have with us, taking for that, that, that addition detail there, is the fact that our rule here is to protect the public of the city, Cedar Springs, that's probably where it's there. Um, we have to weigh, uh, all of these cities, ultimately against what is going to be the best influence for the city. And city, not city, it's not, but the people, of the public, of city, of Cedar Springs. Um, when we weigh all of it together, intent, and, um, great potential service that this could bring to people's Cedar Springs. Um, I'm comfortable with the point. Any other?
Do you have a comment? Um, so in this discovery stuff that we did, um, I did reach out to IMS, our, our building inspector. And ask, how did this happen? Who, who gave you authority to issue a demolition permit, a new building permit, and so forth? And that, what was explained to me is that it was a difference between one person reviewed the initial site plan. Walked away, a different person didn't review the site plan, and started doing the inspections. He was called, becoming inspect, the building's down, yep, it's down. And then to rebuild, so there was some miscommunication among our building inspectors.
Well, they also did just, um, one of the main people there, did just kind of leave in the middle of it, and I know it caused a lot of confusion on our end, because it, you know, he had said that, you know, this was going to happen, and then we were expecting somebody to be out there, and we're waiting from the coming, and nobody came, so we called, and they're like, yes, please not with us anymore, so, I think that probably played a role in that. So I don't think it was intentional on that part of the wall, but, right.
But I think maybe there's some communication between the city and our building officials. These are our expectations, you know, everybody needs to review that site plan before you go, go do an inspection at the location.
So, actually, yeah, I have the authority to say, make them do this, or make them do that, but sure, that sounds like a
Useful request?
Um. I'm the new guy that was just out there with the screaming, you know, so, I was like, you thought I was a guy like that.
All in favor of the motion as as figured, as I would, I, I, or both? Motion carries. Keep building.
I often, yeah, out, and thank you to all of you. My experience from the beginning to my experience more lately has been very supportive in every regard, even helping me keep out the colors, to make sure that I wasn't going against, which but, um, it's been great, and I know that hasn't always been people's feedback, but my experience has been wonderful with all of you, so.
Thank you, thank you. Keep, keep working to imagine the city planners, that's very good, to make sure that they got those, those boxes, that I, the problem, but.
They've been great, and if you have any questions, I have, we do. Thank you, have a great night.
Okay, um, I don't intend that, um, other than this, uh, we have the Oklahoma Council Master Plan Letters. Anything you need to do with that?
No, what I just thought, you know, they're, um, we're doing our master plan, um, as I get information from them, I'm sure they'll be holding meetings, and I can let you know when they are, if somebody wants to attend. Welcome to the public, so, it's FYI, so.
No, we're, we're going to be going to our own master plan, and, and, before too much longer, so. Never mind, I was going to make a joke about who responded to attend master plan, and that was, um, song, but, but, I, I couldn't even bring myself.
You're too happy.
Yeah, yeah, so, I was, well, I think it's fun, then, once you go.
I'm tired of the tires, waiting to make the door shut, so I thought, I
I, I, is it, I'm doing.
So, it's just a bunch of people sitting in their rooms, parents, to, um, try to make it fun.
We have a lot, a lot of good ideas, a lot of things that we've been gathering over the years, but we might still give them to Donald paper at some point, but we don't have to do it tonight. Um, eleven, open discussion for issues not on you, definitely. Uh, so, I made correspondent. Of course, we have a twenty-five day calendar, and I will have my screen open at the moment, but I'm, yeah, they were delayed a week. I'll report to July. Yeah, it's one of those Ashford moves. Oh, it's July, well, um, July, well, maybe. Um, and then, item two, upcoming project, the first one on there is family farm at home. I know we've been hearing about their public storage, and if they like that, is there anything that's in the home, or is this?
I haven't heard from them, so the volume report.
Good. Uh, then, item B, the site order revisions.
We can't wait to get the progress on that, we've been
I, yeah. That's one, so the box, the box signs did another day.
Yeah, I did another day, I don't know.
I have, I love box signs. And then, item C, animal control, that's new.
So, certain folks came to me, um, Cedar Springs is the only community left in Kent County that has our own animal control organs. So, for example, last week, there was a wild raccoon over there on curb street, and people kept calling city hall, what do I do, what do I do? We told them to call Kent County Sheriff's Department, and they said, you're the only city not in our jurisdiction, we can't come and take your, your animals, but, but an officer did come and removed it, didn't kill us, I relocated it. So, whatever, we need to look at our animal control organs, if there are pieces that we want to keep, we need to move it to a different section, and then adopt Kent County's animal control organs. Then their officers can come and help.
Oh.
Unruling animals and
Sounds like a good energy one, those are the last ones. I'm guessing that predates from the, over having the
Probably, yeah.
Okay, uh, then, item three, there's the, the, continue the, what we love on the property, there are so many, there are evidence.
I think we're coming to an end, and also.
Um, I think it's, it's taken up, uh, there's, there's bits in the computer that are theoretically going to be accessible to some portion of us in the future, that will have that information, where we did not, so, keep them coming.
Yep.
Um, B, staff comments, I'm going to be very careful this time, not to jump over any comments, so they didn't like, so, staff comments, you made it.
The only thing I have is, um, last week, I attended the, uh, Kent County Insurance Department slash, you know, Health Department on seventy mile. What a beautiful facility. I know, we didn't do any of the site plan review or anything, but it is a beautiful facility.
And so they have, they have health department stuff, and that is.
Right, one half, one half is health department, one half is the sheriff's department.
I think it's a North Colony Health Department Clinic.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, they do RIC and all that, I believe.
Yes.
Great, they're not as dry as, you know. Staff comments, secret.
And you mentioned the next, any meeting's going to be July eleventh, it's over the fourth of July, um, so everyone has a safe and happy fourth of July, enjoy.
Sure, sure. Over. Planning Commission. I would say that reveal, your structure now for the daycare is a way better structure now, than it was before. Yeah, it's beautiful, yeah, I'm not, not being bad, but the old strip block walls fell down, it's new, much better structure. Yeah, I, I, I do. Careful with, yeah.
Back on our car.
Well, very nice, I do say within that.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. All right, give me your share, uh, reporting city councilor.
You're not, we're not, we're we're going to be, um, moving, everything, managing positions, we're going to, we're going to do, um, in-house first. And then, um, if we don't have, um, any applicants, or we don't have one that is still on, you can, correct, you can, pull out. Out by. You had to, kind of come up with a policy, because even, you've never That should be happening pretty soon, um. The staff is really working well with all of it, and it sounds like, uh, like they create um, some people, working with people, as there's a lot of the D room, see, we're, um, with our injuries. Very, very.
People around, so, yeah, it's, yeah, thank you. Here's a darlin', that's all I know, yeah, so I, I've heard a lot of things around, so things are running smoothly, um, you guys are doing great, I hope you're not overworked. Thank you, our last one.
We can't just do this, yeah. Um, so we'll have, so these two site plans are going to be, I'd like for, hopefully, for getting, I'd for, for like, wait three class, and what else, and hopefully, something to come out, or, or, so, that'll be our family marching orders for the next thing, I love them, so, that family phone, please, we can't come in. Okay, and right now, we just have a hand drawn and sketch, and we told them that that works good enough, but that was a point, although we're not here, and I have to, so, good thing you're in the band, I, I don't know. So, the jury was here tonight, too, you're like, why are you even here? Your fact is not the point. You, the van, and I would write for it, oh, yeah. You're not supposed to be in front of the planning commission, your fact is not for, perfect. I, I definitely understand that, you know, and, but it's also, we, we, it's a learning. Yes, thank you, thank you. So, um, move back, let's say we're here, so.
Um, what was the, what was the?